150 Board of Education meeting for January 12th, 2015 to order. Would you please call the roll?
Mr. President?
Here.
Mrs. Ross?
Here.
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 Would you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Real quickly before we get started, I would like to welcome back Mrs. Bastian, our Board Secretary, who is back with us tonight off of medical, and say thank you to Ms. Brown and Ms. Dixon, who covered for her while she was away and did a great job for us, especially Ms. Dixon, who sort of got conned into it at the last minute, maybe against her will, but it went very well, but we're glad to have Joni back. We're going to start with awards and recognition, and we get to recognize Peoria's Finest Teacher for this month. Mrs. Meyer?
Good evening. Peoria's Finest Teacher is a monthly recognition that we are sponsoring for those members of PFT that go above and beyond, exemplify best practices in teaching, and will reach out to the community and parents to be involved in our schools. The teachers in this district work so hard to serve the children and families of Peoria each day, and we want to showcase this positive effort. We want to thank our winner's principal, Ms. Branscombe, and all of the assistants that are here with her, and any faculty, friends, and family that are here in support of our monthly winner. Our nominator of this month's winner is Ms. Annie Nevett. Come up, Annie. And this month's Peoria's Finest Teacher is Sharon Mann at Glen Oak Community Learning Center. Come on up. Congratulations.
I would like just to say a few words about Ms. Mann. To give you a little picture of what she does every day, a little poem that I wrote. It is entitled, "I Lead." "I lead to teach them discipline. They listen to learn right from wrong. I lead to teach them real-life lessons. They grow into productive citizens. I provide humor to de-escalate situations. They laugh and forget a problem existed. I speak from my heart. They speak from their lives. I listen to hear them with my heart. They listen with theirs. I watch as they grow and am happy. They watch as they grow and feel pride. I lead because I dream. They grow because they dream also." She is a wonderful teacher and a wonderful friend, and she just, she, I love her to death.
She's lucky to be in our district.
Being in the spotlight is not something I'm comfortable with. And as you can see, I'm blessed with some of the best administrators, some of the best co-teachers and fellow teachers and staff around me. If you have someone like that saying words about you like that, it's pretty overwhelming because you sit there and say, wow, is that really me? And then you sit there and you think, yeah. And then you sit there and you take it a little bit further, and it's like the line there about de-escalating and stuff like that. I don't know how many times I've called you guys, and we all laugh about it and de-escalate me. So it's kind of like a big old circle. It's not a perfect world in my classroom, but God knows, I'm truly, truly blessed with it. And I appreciate being a District 150 employee and having a chance to come and touch as many lives as I can. And so thank you back around to you guys, too. Okay? Thank you.
Congratulations on behalf of the board. Congratulations. Just another example of the great employees, the staff that we have in this district that are dedicated and hardworking and don't get enough recognition. And thank you to the PFT for making sure there are at least some of the teachers and staff that are recognized each month for the great jobs they do. So thank you very much. Okay, I do believe we have a number of announcements tonight. We've all been given assignments that, to get some information out. Go ahead, Reverend Butler.
I'm very pleased with my announcement, and...
That is to say, thank you so very much to the parents, community leaders, and members that braved the bitter cold last week to participate in our first Strategic Plan Community Forum. Approximately 50 people attended the event, which was held at Peoria High School, and board members were provided a summary of the forum comments by the Board Secretary, Mrs. Bastian again, whom we're glad to have back. Our second forum will be held at Richwoods High School next Tuesday, January 20th, from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. Community relations and communications, employment and volunteerism, and fiscal responsibility will be the three top topics to be covered during the table discussions and reports. Please visit our website for more information. Again, the next Strategic Plan Community Forum is next Tuesday, January 20th, at Richwoods High School from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m.
Okay. I'd just like to add a big thank you to Mr. Copeland and Mr. Bateman and Reverend Butler for sort of planning the forums. I think we got some feedback from the community that may be tweaking a couple of things. I'd also like to thank all of our unions who provided us extra help to, at the sign-in tables and throughout the forum at the different tables, and that was a huge, huge help to us to have them volunteer to help us with that. So I thought it was a great evening, a good mix of people that came out and were, I think, very honest and open about how they felt about things and things that, I felt as a board member, I heard from the community some of the things that were more of a priority than others, even though some were concerns, but they sort of prioritized them for us. So I thought it was a great time, and we certainly hope we'll have a good crowd again next Tuesday. Mr. Crawford?
As you know, Washington Gifford Middle School is a special program of Peoria Public Schools dedicated to meet the needs of academically gifted students in grades five through eight. We're inviting students who are residents of Peoria Public Schools District 150 of the boundary areas to apply for admission to the program. The application for, and all supporting documents are found on the district's gifted education webpage. The deadline for applications to Washington is this Wednesday, January 14th, at 5:00 p.m.
Thank you. Mrs. Kostick?
Good evening. I am, I am very, 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 very excited over last week, was it on Friday?
Last Friday.
It was last Friday. I had the opportunity to attend the midterm graduation for Knoxville Center. So congratulations to the 13 students from Knoxville Center for student success, for successfully completing their requirements for graduation. Eight of those students, their families, and the Knoxville classmates attended the graduation ceremony held at Woodruff Commons on Friday. Knoxville is the only, is the only district high school to offer a mid-year graduation ceremony. Graduating students participated in Knoxville programs to recover and earn credits so that they could earn a high school diploma. Knoxville Center serves students that are behind on credits and/or that have life hurdles or limitations that do not allow them to attend high school in a traditional setting. That, that particular graduation ceremony was very, very enlightening. To know that there are so many struggles that some of the students have gone through and to persevere was just so heartfelt. It, just, just being a part of it and listening to some of their stories was, it just makes all the difference in the world. Knowing that what we're doing at Knoxville is making a difference. So I was really glad that I had the opportunity to attend that graduation ceremony.
Thank you. Mr. Bateman?
Yeah, just want to let the community know that because of last week's snow days, the application deadline for the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program at Richwoods High School is being extended through tomorrow, Tuesday, January 13th. Parents can deliver applications to Richwoods or to their eighth-grade counselor or IB coordinator. For questions, please contact Travis Bowley, and his email address is travis.bowley, spelt B-O-W-L-B-Y, at PSD150.org, or you can contact Mr. Bowley at 309-550-7611. Again, that telephone number is 309-550-7611. Thank you.
Thank you.
Peoria Public Schools District 150 is holding its 23rd Annual Math Counts Competition on Saturday, January 24th, from 8:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. at Lindbergh Miller School. Competing will be 11 teams of 10 mathletes who will compete, test in three rounds: sprint round, target round, and the team round, in order to determine the individual district champion and a District 150 champion. At 11:15, when the official rounds are over and the tests are being scored, students will compete in a fun-filled mathletic, excuse me, it's mathematics, games event to win prizes. The award ceremony will begin at approximately 11:45 a.m. The Math Counts Competition helps students prepare for the regional Math Counts event to be held at Bradley University on February 7th, 2015. It is a national middle school competitive mathematics program that promotes mathematics achievements through a series of fun and engaging problem-solving testing rounds.
Thank you. Thank you. I would like to remind everyone that this month's Parent University has a lot of information and tools to help you help your child succeed in school and beyond. It is Thursday, January 22nd, at Franklin Primary School. Some of the workshop offerings are getting prepared for online course registration for high school students, which begins later this month. In addition, you can find out how middle and high school students are able to utilize career cruising to learn about potential careers. Also, you'll be introduced to ISAT's Replacement Park, the new testing system. It's just around the corner, and we want parents to know what their child can expect with this new state assessment. Franklin is home to Avid Elementary, and Franklin's staff is looking forward to sharing Avid strategies to help your child prepare early for college. As we enter second semester, we have tips to help you and your student avoid the report card surprise. These are just a few of the nearly 20 different workshops that are planned for the January Parent University. We hope you'll join us at Franklin on January 22nd for a free meal, starting at 5:30, and workshops for parents of students of any age or any District 150 school. So anyone in the district is invited to these, these workshops. Free babysitting is also provided if you need that. While Franklin is not represented on our boards here tonight, we would encourage you to visit our display in the center court of Northwoods Mall to see Franklin's avid work on display. Thank you.
And finally, Illinois Laureate Dr. Kevin Stein will be the guest speaker at Lyrically Speaking, a poetry spoken word open, open-mic event for middle and high school students at Woodruff Career and Technical Center on Thursday, February 12th, from 5:30 to 7:30 p.m. at the Woodruff Auditorium. Lyrically Speaking is hosted by the WCTC Contemporary Learning Program. It's open to all central Illinois middle and high school students. There's no entry fee. Students may participate either by reading their own poems or by reciting poetry by another author, and may enter individually or as a group. There will be three event categories: free-form spoken word, recited spoken word, and a team event. The deadline for registration is this Thursday, January 15th. For information, forums, and resources for teachers and students, contact Charlotte Thomas at charlotte.thomas@psd150.org, or visit the Remarkable Times newsletter on our website.
Thank you. Are there any other announcements? Okay, I need the motion in a second to approve the minutes of the December 15th, 2014 meeting.
So move.
Second.
Would you call the roll?
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Boyd?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostick?
I'm sorry.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Wood.
Aye.
Six ayes.
Thank you. We're now at audience opportunity to address the board as a reminder. This is a business meeting of the Board of Education, held in public, not a public meeting. It is not a question-and-answer session, and it is not a debate, so there will be no response from the Horseshoe unless one of us has comments once the audience's comments are completed. Recognizing everyone's First Amendment rights, we still ask that you refrain from speaking about subjects, topics relating directly to district personnel, and also those not germane to the Board of Education's authority. We also ask that you refrain from using inappropriate language and keep a civil tone to your remarks. Please also keep in mind that just because something can be said does not necessarily mean that it should be said. When you are recognized, please come to the podium and give your name for the record. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. No one under 18 years of age may address the board unless accompanied by a parent, guardian, or a teacher without the consent of the majority of the board. Board members are also available by phone and/or email. This contact information is available on the district website and in the school calendars that parents proceed from their school. Savino Sierra?
I just going over this agenda here, and concerning that number five, I'm strictly against taking a couple of, the board members taking another trip, thinking, you know, that's spending our money badly, because I don't see that much improvement in whatever the school, the school board does and try to get the programs going. When we, when we vote on you people, you make us believe that you got to know how to do all this stuff, and it don't come that way all the time. And so I'm, I'm strictly against that trip for two of the board members to go, and that's really expensive. And you crying that you haven't got money for this and for that, and you bring it on yourself, and the public is going to get tired of that, and they're going to vote against trying to raise some more money for the school board if you don't spend, spend it wisely. So this is all I got to say to you on that point. And it's been put in a paper that you're trying to get a, what you call, a name for the old Peoria High School. I call it grandma, because it's old, and they haven't repaired a lot of that stuff that I pointed out to you, and it'd be, it's a shame that you want to get a name for that. You know, I'd be, I'd be ashamed to show it. So I want you to know that I'm strictly against it, and I'll, I'll talk against it. And if I might say a word that don't settle with you, I'd, that's, I apologize, but that's too bad, because a person can take, and then you get angry, you know, of what's happening in this district, you know? You don't listen to constructive criticism, and you're trying to get others, other methods to help you, but you don't listen anyway. And so I, I just, you know, they say a word to the wise is sufficient, but I guess you haven't got there yet. Thank you.
Sharon Cruz?
In November, Bradley played basketball against Dr. Lathan's alma mater. Taking students to the game was touted as an opportunity to motivate students to attend college, but the hint of a personal agenda taints so many decisions. Playing basketball, not watching games, is a strong motive for going to college, especially among those who see no other options. They need to be offered additional options. Sports motivate students to go to college, but they don't enhance college readiness. You're putting the cart before the horse. After I sent my FOIA request, Copeland emailed principals telling them that a FOIA request had been received, so unfortunately, as fun as one event was yesterday, our event was yesterday, we now have some additional work to request of you. Thus, I was blamed for the data gathering effort. I guess you didn't have to know that only 541 instead of 700 students attended the event, and only 86 of the 200 adults. Bradley was paid $4,500 for 900 tickets, but three, 273 tickets were not used, at least by the data I received. New information indicates that Dr. Lathan and friends sat in better seats. Why distance yourself from the students you want to influence and who paid for those tickets? The event depleted the education fund of $10,204. $3,245 was spent on 22 buses. 543 shirts and ink to decorate the shirts were ordered for a total of $2,458. Most ridiculous was the $55 shipping charge from Texas for the $119 worth of ink. Overspending and underplanning seem to be two of Lathan's greatest weaknesses. One email called attention to the fact that parents were not given much advance notice of this event. A budget doesn't seem to mean much to Dr. Lathan, who seems to know that you will allow her to spend money on any of her many whims. On a personal note, I had no intentions, encouragements, or motivations to go to college. Two years after graduation, I decided to go to college. I was quite surprised to learn that I was college-ready. I never took any college prep courses, yet I was college-ready because for 12 years I did all that was required of me just because it was required, and later in hopes that someday I could get a job. There is no doubt that I would have been more ready if I had taken higher-level courses, but District 150's secretarial track served me well and gave me job skills that paid my way to college. Please concentrate on making kids ready for the next grade. College motivation will follow.
Terry Knapp?
First of all, I'd like to draw your attention to this report, the report from HR. Fifty, 50 student, or excuse me, substitute teachers resigned? Fifty substitute teachers resigned? You can't get substitute teachers to come and teach here. If you didn't know that, I was sitting with a person tonight who got a call on your regular phone line or whatever, and he just laughed at me and, and just turned it off. But people won't substitute here. You need to consider paying them more, doing something, cleaning up the discipline, or whatever. Sharon Cruz deserves a round of applause for giving you this. This is something that should have been given you by your own administration. This, this is the report that you have before you, the Sharon Cruz, prepared, that talks about the basketball game that the kids attended. It's appalling to buy 900, for us to buy 900 tickets and only use 600 or 700 of them and waste that money just on spare tickets, if you will. It's also embarrassing that we never talk here at the Horseshoe, and I've never heard an explanation here of what core courses are. I'm sure the Board of Education knows what core courses are, but the NCAA requires 14 core courses with a grade point average of at least 2.5, which is basically a B-, in order for you to even qualify for a college scholarship. They also require a minimum performance on the ACT test. I think it's important that the Board of Education understands what goes on here. 14 core courses, I'm not talking about general science, I'm not talking about general business. Those are not counters. Those are not core courses. You need to discuss what these students need to go to college, not just play basketball, not just observe a basketball game, but what it, what it requires to go to college. Another thing I'd like to mention is the lack of information coming from this Horseshoe about Quest. You know, I heard the Turkish president or whatever quoted the other day that women should stay in the home and raise children. I mean, we're going to Turkey on four consecutive trips through Quest School to the most dangerous part of the world that they can possibly go to, and no one seems concerned about it. I'm concerned about it as a taxpayer, I'm concerned about it as a parent and a former teacher. These kids need to be safe. That is not a safe part of the world to be going to. You know, France, you saw the response in France to these people who, you know, freedom of speech was denied. Sometimes this Board of Education would like to deny free speech. You know, you should encourage free speech, you should encourage comments at these board meetings, not discourage them. Thank you.
Jeff Atkins-Dutrow?
Jeff Atkins-Dutrow with the Peoria Federation of Teachers. The Board of Education has stated emphatically that our district is facing hard times financially. Given that we're in hard times, I'd like to recommend that the board compile a comprehensive list of all the programs, programs brought in from the outside, academic or otherwise, for which our district pays. Then carefully scrutinize each program to determine if it's critical, or if, in the name of being financially expedient, the program should be cut. What I hear from our hard-working professional educators, the experts in the classroom, our teachers, is that there are so many programs and related assessments that there's often not ample time to teach. We have, as a union, compiled data on which programs and mandates are beneficial in the classroom and which are more of a hindrance. We intend to present this list and data for discussion at our district's next District ULT meeting. In talks with our executive board, a determination has been made for a push for a much-needed return to fundamentals, a shift that would benefit our district both academically and financially. Certainly, hard times are not. Not a single teacher's job should be lost at the expense of an outside program brought into our district via a for-profit company. We are, of course, open to furthering this discussion with any members of the board who might be willing. The time for this discussion is now, and we certainly hope to hear from you. Thank you.
James Rayner?
Good evening, Superintendent Lathan, board members, parents, teachers, business constituents. My name is James Rayner. I'm a national consultant, a huge part of your balanced literacy approach. I came tonight to present myself in person to the school board, and I want to say to the school board and 150, you are a beacon light for those that are around you to make a decision to teach all children, not some, all children. It is my belief, and it proves that you believe the same, that every child in 150 can and will learn. It's our moral obligation, and if we don't teach every child, then it is a crime. There is no difference in medical malpractice than educational malpractice. It is my firm belief that what you're doing here in 150 is creating a program or a literacy approach that all children can learn. That if children can't learn the way we teach, we will teach the way they learn. That is our approach. We will not settle for anything less. Many of you may not know me, but I know you, and I know what your expectations are. I will do whatever I am able to do to reach every child here in 150. They deserve it. It is our obligation, moral obligation, to teach every child. And I will say this again, not some, not a few. Every child deserves an opportunity to learn, to be prepared for higher ed. We are teaching our children. They're not my children, your children, they're our children. We must... our children. They're not my children, your children, they're our children. We must respond to that immediately. We will not accept anything other than excellence. We don't make excuses. So thank you for recognizing and believing and putting in place what you're doing to be a beacon light for those that are around you. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there, is there any response from Board members to any of the comments that were made tonight? Reverend Butler?
Well, I just want to say thank you to Mr. Rayner for what you just shared with us. Like you said, some may not know you, but some do. I've heard about you, and perhaps some of the rest of you Board members may have as well, and the report is very good. So I just really embrace what Mr. Rayner brought to us tonight and let us put that up along with everything else that we hear as we lead this program.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, that brings us-
As it relates to the HR report, we do have to clean up. Each year, we ask substitutes if they are going to return to the district. It might be retirees that are retiring or people have worked in the district. They have a form that they fill out that says, yes, I would like to return. If they do not return in a certain amount of time, then we clean it up and we place them on the HR report because we need to close the file on that particular substitute until they are ready to return. So some of those things that you see are people that never returned last fall to the school district. And just a few other things, we are showing, if people would truly pay attention and listen as it relates not only to Avid and our total curriculum, is we're showing students all facets of college life, not only what it takes to get there and get through college, but also the extracurriculars. Our curriculum, and we utilize our tours for our primary students at Woodruff and our high schools. We also have curriculum fairs for every rising ninth through 12th grader. Those actually start in two weeks, Tuesday, February, no, January 27th will be at Peoria High. Wednesday, January 28th will be at Richwoods, and then Thursday, January 29th at Manuel Academy. We also have curriculum guides that will be published and that are also available on our district website that provide students information on colleges, so they know what they need. And then our counselors also, every year, something that has been put in place is every fall, we advise all students, they receive a copy of their transcripts, and that's presented to parents and students at our open house. And then parents and students that do not attend the open house, the counselors then bring them in, so students know what their status is. They don't have to wait until June or May of June before graduation to find out they're not graduating. And so we provide that progress along the way for our students and our parents, because sometimes I think the wrong information gets out there. But staff are working hard, and we do appreciate what they're doing to get all of our students prepared for either college or career at the high school. Thank you.
Thank you. Reverend Butler?
Yes, and Mrs. Kostic and Mrs. Ross can speak to their interest in going to the National Conference this year for school board members. I just know in the past and to have participated in state and national conferences that we, as board members, know that there is an ongoing need for us to meet with those in the state and on a national level what is happening in education. So when individuals ask about why we do it, let's be ready and available to share with them. It is needful, and it does have, it is an investment in the leadership of this Board of Education. So always be in support of whatever we can do as a board team to be effective in our leadership.
Okay, that brings us to information items. Purchase orders over $2,500. Are there any questions for Mr. Wilcoxton tonight? Seeing none, reported requests under the Freedom of Information Act and status of such requests?
Since our last board meeting report on December 15th, 2014, we received one new Freedom of Information Act request. There were no pending requests noted on the December 15th, 2014 board report. We received one request for this calendar year.
Thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda. Reverend Butler, would you summarize the gifts to the school district for this evening's meeting?
Yes, gifts to the school district this meeting total $8,927. Year-to-date, it is $8,927. And the proposed action for these gifts is that the following donations be accepted and letters of appreciation be sent to the donors. And just a note here on some of the ones, these are very hefty donations, but there is one for $3,500 involving a vehicle for the WCT Auto Body Shop. There's also $1,800 involving a fare adapter stroller for the developmental center, and then also $2,127 also for a gate trainer at the developmental center. So we thank everyone that's making those, not always general and in monetary, but in some of the just actual equipment that is necessary for our special needs.
Thank you. The consent agenda tonight consists of the gifts to the school district, just summarized, the payment of bills, the human resources report, the proposed action is the appointment, employment, compensation, performance, resignation, retirement, or discharge of an employee, payment for travel, board travel requests, the proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the following expenditure for board member travel, Lynn Kostic and Martha Ross to attend the National School Board Association Conference at a total cost of $4,290.70. Number six, approval of resignation agreement. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the resignation agreement of James Jimelow effective January 12th, 2015. Number seven is the intergovernmental agreement with the City of Peoria regarding the sale of district property. The proposed action is that the Board of Education authorize the administration to enter into an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Peoria to facilitate the sale of district property located at 839 West Moss Street. The term of the agreement is for six months with a minimum authorized purchase price of $150,000. And number eight is the memorandum of understanding with Local 780, the FY15 Joint RIF Committee. The proposed action is that the Board of Education approve the attached memorandum of understanding between the Board of Education, Peoria Public School District #150, and the Peoria Federation of Teachers, IFT, AFT, AFL-CIO, Local 780 pursuant to Senate Bill 7, Public Act 97-008. Are there any items that a board member would like polled for a separate vote? Seeing none, could I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Would you like to, are there any things that you'd like to comment on, on the intergovernmental agreement with the city? This is the second or third time, I think, that we have done the, third time, they thought they had sold the building on Moss, and that fell through. So we're going back so that they can work to try and find another buyer for that building. And did you want to talk about number eight?
Yes, please.
Go ahead.
Oh, wait, did you-
Just in regard to that, the reason the city was involved is because there were concerns expressed by the Moss Bradley Homeowners Association about the nature of any potential purchase of the property. And so we turned that relationship in terms of finding a buyer for that property over to the city to work with that homeowners' association, and we're continuing to do that.
Correct.
As it relates to item number four, the Joint Reduction in Force Committee is comprised of union leadership and district leadership. We are required annually for our joint committee to meet and make a decision as it relates to reduction in force how teachers will be grouped. Pera and Senate Bill 7 required, starting in 2010, that teachers be, based on their evaluation rating, be grouped into four groups. Group one, having no evaluation. Group two, needs improvement. Group three, proficient. And then group four, excellent. So as we lay teachers off, we start for group one and work our way up. So this agreement just decides how we will handle teachers based on evaluations. For example, if a teacher receives a needs improvement this first year, then they have an opportunity based on their last year. If it was a proficient in the previous year, they would remain in group three. Just a reminder, as it relates to group two and needs improvements, last July, the governor, former Governor Quinn, signed into law that teachers will have recall rights as it relates to needs improvement. So this is just annually what we go through to make that decision, and then we bring it before the Board. Thank you to the union leadership for working with us on it. I think it's taken us several months, and we had to make sure when you sit at the table that we're taking into every situation that might occur. For example, if someone goes out on medical leave, we have to have kind of an explanation in place to say, okay, so many days. For example, if anyone was hired before December, whatever that date is, then they would have an evaluation. Anyone, let's say, for example, people who are on the board report tonight, then they would not have the necessary evaluation. So we look at how they are grouped, and it just keeps it all fair to all teachers that are involved in the evaluation process. So this is a reason that, just going back to our previous discussions, that we must follow and adhere to the guidelines because this can have a long-term effect on a teacher, maybe not in one year, but two or three years down the road.
Item five for a separate vote.
Okay. There any comments or questions on any of the other items? Okay, so we are voting on the consent agenda except for number five, which is the board travel request. Would you call the roll?
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, board travel request. I need a motion and a second on this one?
So moved.
Second.
Did you have any discussion, just want a separate vote?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any, Mr. Bateman?
Just follow up on, I went to the Illinois Association of the State School Board in November, or Triple I, I believe is the correct terminology. The networking and the breakout sessions that occur during those sessions are so helpful to see what's going on, both at state level, and that I've not been to a National School Board Association, but I can see where the value of understanding, again, those networking opportunities at the national level, to understand what's going on at a national level and directions that are being taken, as well as the breakout sessions that are being held, that those are immensely valuable, and I would agree with Reverend Butler, that they are an investment and not a waste of money.
Thank you. The other thing I would like to say, too, is that these are two totally different people that are going on this trip that went on the one in November, and I think that all school board members are very conscious of the expenses and where our finances are, and we have asked other staff to cut back on their traveling, and so you don't usually see the same people wanting to go to two or three things a year. So we stay within the budget that we've allotted, and I think we are being fiscally responsible when we make our decision about wanting to go on these things. So are there any other comments?
I'll just have something to add. I have a presentation from my times at the school board conference. I'll just make my comments up.
Okay. Would you call the roll?
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Of staying.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy?
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Loebmar?
Aye.
Six ayes on the state board.
Thank you. That brings us to the deliberation agenda and discipline.
Expulsions. Proposed action that the expulsions listed on the report dated January 12th, 2015, be approved as amended.
Second.
Would you call the roll?
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Loebmar?
Aye.
Six ayes on the state board.
Thank you. That brings us to the deliberation agenda and discipline.
Expulsions. Proposed action that the expulsions listed on the report dated January 12th, 2015, be approved as amended.
Second.
Would you call the roll?
Mr. Bateman?
Aye.
Mrs. Ross?
Aye.
Mr. Crawford?
Aye.
Mr. Cloy? Aye.
Mrs. Kostic?
Aye.
Mrs. Butler?
Aye.
Mrs. Loebmar?
Aye.
Seven ayes, zero nays.
Thank you. That brings us to presentation and suggestions by board members. Mr. Crawford?
As promised, I have my report from the Triple I School Board Conference. Mr. Bateman, as you'll recall, had covered some of the content of what the general session speaker spoke about, so I won't review that. However, I share his sentiments that they were informative and helpful and generally entertaining. They're more kind of the rah-rah portion of the program. They get you excited about what you're doing for the kids and give you some, a bigger perspective of what your role as a public servant is. I attended the delegate assembly on behalf of the district. We had 855, we have 855 school districts in the state of Illinois. The delegate, the assembly reported that 83% of those school districts attended the school board conference. I would say the delegate assembly was well-attended. We took votes on a variety of measures, and generally, these measures are suggested positions of the IASB in terms of recommendations they're going to make to the state legislature regarding laws they think will be helpful to the education of kids. Some of the new ones, new resolutions included the adoption of allowing the school facility tax to include expenditures for computers and technology. Another position they took is encouraging the legislature to pass TIF reforms that do not allow a municipality to extend the life of a TIF beyond 23 years. Another position said, basically stood for the proposition that we're not going to have a statewide discipline, discipline program, rather, the school districts are going to be, it's going to be left to the school districts alone to decide on their own policies and procedures regarding discipline. Opens Meetings Act, a support for an exemption to the Opens Meetings Act where we could talk about school safety and building security, I suppose, to not alert those who might do harm to our, what's going on inside the buildings. And then finally, they were talking about, which we've had experience with recently, extending the time for the boards could fill a vacancy on the board from 45 to 60 days. Some other amended positions that they discussed were better prioritization of school districts that had been in line for school construction grants, school finance reform. They talked a little bit about some of the various criteria that would be evaluated in determining what appropriate school finance reform might be. Interestingly, you could tell that the IASB is conflicted between the two camps of school districts because there was no mention of the recent Senate bill on how, about the true equity funding. Rather, they kind of straddled that, that whole debate and talked about equity a little bit, but also talked about that, you know, we should also, essentially language indicating they wouldn't necessarily shut out larger school districts. I found that to be kind of interesting. Also, they talked more about, it's evident that amongst all our school districts, the concern over federal and state mandates continues to be high on the list in terms of concerns. And so they're, they, just all these positions that basically said, no more passing of, you know, unfunded mandates unless you can, you know, no, actually, actually, no more passing of mandates unless you can show that they're fully funded with non-local funds, which is, I believe, what the law requires. But then there's another, there's a number of exceptions that they have to those things that, where we oftentimes see mandates come our way that really are never fully funded. So the IASB is working on our behalf to make sure that we are going to be hamstrung by those, they know that those hurt us, and they're trying to make sure that we're not going to be hamstrung by mandates in the future. Talked a little bit about, you know, making sure that we still have the ability to determine our aggregate tax rate as part of any kind of school finance reform, also in terms of capital projects, making sure that any additional funds for capital projects would supplement current costs for construction and not necessarily plant those that already exist. So, you know, some of our discussion here tonight has been how these conferences are educational for us board members. I can tell you that if you have the opportunity to sit in on the delegate assembly, which I know Reverend Butler you have and others on this board have, you get to understand the language of school legislation, which is very helpful. You, it also gives you kind of a reaffirmation, two things. One, we're all in this together They get you excited about what you're doing for the kids and give you some bigger perspective of what your role as a public servant is. I attended the delegate assembly on behalf of the district. We had 855, we have 855 school districts in the state of Illinois. The delegate, the assembly reported that 83% of those school districts attended the school board conference. I would say the delegate assembly was well-attended. We took votes on a variety of measures, and generally, these measures are suggested positions of the IASB in terms of recommendations they're going to make to the state legislature regarding laws they think will be helpful to the education of kids. Some of the new ones, new resolutions included the adoption of allowing the school facility tax to include expenditures for computers and technology. Another position they took is encouraging the legislature to pass TIF reforms that do not allow a municipality to extend the life of a TIF beyond 23 years. Another position said, basically stood for the proposition that we're not going to have a statewide discipline, discipline program, rather, the school districts are going to be, it's going to be left to the school districts alone to decide on their own policies and procedures regarding discipline. Opens Meetings Act, a support for an exemption to the Open Meetings Act, where we could talk about school safety and building security, I suppose, to not alert those who might do harm to what's going on inside the buildings. And then finally, they were talking about, which we've had experience with recently, extending the time for the boards could fill a vacancy on the board from 45 to 60 days. Some other amended positions that they discussed were better prioritization of school districts that had been in line for school construction grants, school finance reform. They talked a little bit about some of the various criteria that would be evaluated and determining what appropriate school finance reform might be. Interestingly, you could tell that the IASB is conflicted between the two camps of school districts, because there was no mention of the recent Senate bill on how, about the true equity funding. Rather, they kind of straddled that whole debate and talked about equity a little bit, but also talked about that, you know, we should also, essentially language indicating they wouldn't necessarily shut out larger school districts. I found that to be kind of interesting. Also, they talked more about, it's evident that amongst all our school districts, the concern over federal and state mandates continues to be high on the list in terms of concerns. And so they, just all these positions that basically said, no more passing of, you know, unfunded mandates unless you can, you know, actually, no more passing of mandates unless you can show that they're fully funded with non-local funds, which is, I believe, what the law requires, but then there's another, there's a number of exceptions that they have to those things that, where we oftentimes see mandates come our way that really are never fully funded. So the ISB is working on our behalf to make sure that we are going to be hamstrung by those, they know that those hurt us, and they're trying to make sure that we're not going to be hamstrung by mandates in the future. Talked a little bit about, you know, making sure that we still have the ability to determine our aggregate tax rate as part of any kind of school finance reform, also in terms of capital projects, making sure that any additional funds for capital projects would supplement current costs for construction and not necessarily supplant those that already exist. So, you know, some of our discussion here tonight has been how these conferences are educational for us board members. I can tell you that if you have the opportunity to sit in on the delegate assembly, which I know Reverend Butler you have and others on this board have, you get to understand the language of school legislation, which is very helpful. It also gives you kind of a reaffirmation, two things. One, we're all in this together with other school districts that are experiencing the same frustrations. Number two, you realize that our school district might be very different from a school district that's in a rural area, and their concerns are going to be different. That helps, because you, just thinking about what the state is facing and how they have to manage some things, gives you some empathy about, and maybe some understanding about how to approach different things you might want, different ways of approaching things, about how, some of the things you might want done in your schools. And finally, just, I think it helps you to come back and be a better board member, because you understand why some of the things that administration brings to you, where it's coming from, the origins of it. It's very tough, and I say this from even now, it's very tough to get your arms around all the language and all the different interests that are involved in, all the language of education, all the interests that are involved in education. Attending this conference helps you assimilate all that and understand it better, so I think it is money well spent. Couple of little things that they, interest resolutions were defeated. One was concealed carry. Somebody had proposed, and how this happens is, school districts are also asked to propose various resolutions for the IASB to consider, and one of the resolutions proposed, not necessarily brought forth by the IASB, which they brought forth a lot of them, they brought forth, one school district brought forth the proposition that school districts on their own ought to be allowed to determine if teachers can carry a firearm in class. Well, of course, the first vote was, are we going to talk about it? Well, it got past that stage, but then after that, it was defeated. But I thought it was, I thought it was an interesting discussion. It was probably one of the more, oh, lively discussions and informative discussions that maybe didn't have as much to do with schooling. Some might disagree with that, but that's kind of how I took it. And then the other one that may have been, may be of note to people is that they did pass a resolution that school board members can serve on another governmental body with taxing authority. So they were going to, yeah, there was a proposed legislation to say that they were going to oppose that taking place, and so that was defeated. But all in all, that was an interesting session to sit in on. It was a very long session. Another session I sat in on, just more about the bullying law, and basically, there, one interesting thing that came up in that particular session was that if you have somebody who is bullying at your school, and they continue that, something effective, if they are bullying someone at that school, that the victim of the bullying moves to another school, and yet that person continues to bully that person online, even though the victim's attending another school, you have a responsibility to that bullying. And under the anti-bullying law, the new anti-bullying law that was, is still kind of being worked out. So, all in all, a good conference. I've gone, I think, every year, and I've always learned something new, and again, I think it's helpful to go back multiple times, because with each year that you serve on the board, you understand more and more what they're talking about, and there's always something to learn, always somebody to network with. So, thank you for allowing me to go.
Thank you. Are there any other presentations or suggestions by board members tonight? Mr. Bateman?
Yeah, just a reminder to the public, with regards to the community forums on strategic plan, we recognize everyone has very busy schedules, the weather can be unconducive or not allow you to attend. So just a reminder to the public that if you're unable to attend, you can send an email to info, correct me if I'm wrong, but info@psd150.org. All the information for these sessions are online. You can go in and look at what the topics are, what the subtopics are between each major heading. And if you are unable to attend, if you were unable to attend the last one, you can go out and look at the topics that were discussed. If you feel strongly about that topic or some of the subtopics, please feel free to send in an email to info@psd150.org. Or if you're looking ahead and you know you've got a conflict coming up, you're not going to be able to attend one of our community forums being held later. We would certainly like to hear your input, receive your input. So just a reminder that there is another option available if you're unable to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else? Reports from board committees. Mr. Crawford?
Mr. Bateman and I held a building committee meeting on January 6th, was it?
Yes.
Okay. And Ed Berry and Margaret Cousins from the Peoria Historical Society attended. They had been involved in efforts to secure historical destinations for a number of our libraries around town. And so they offered their services pro bono to seek a similar designation for the old part of Peoria High, or actually, probably the whole, I think they mentioned the whole building, but out of particular interest for the old part of Peoria High. There were a variety of designations that were available, that are available to us, should we choose to go that route, all of which they explained, and explained the benefits to us, why it'd be good to have Peoria High listed as a, you know, place it on historical register either locally or nationally. The national register of historic places would, of course, be more involved. We were thankful for their presentation, thankful for their services of pro bono work. I asked them the critical question, I said, what benefit does it bring to District 150? Are there any kind of funding benefits? Is there, you know, for instance, if we were to make improvements consistent with some objective laid out, because we are, it is listed as a historical place, would that entitle us to special funding? The answer to that is no. Really, what we'd be looking at is the prestige of being a historic building, and certainly I empathize with that, because it's a beautiful, it's a beautiful structure and something that I think the whole city is very proud of. But that was essentially the extent of the benefits. I don't know, John, if you have a different take on that, but I think that's pretty much what they said, right?
Right. And one thing we did also ask was for a complete copy of the ordinance that covers this, so we can distribute that to board members for review, so that we understand thoroughly what the implications are, if there's any, you know, and there were a lot of questions asked, if the building becomes damaged, if the building requires renovation, what does that entail? And a lot of information was provided on that, but we really wanted to see the ordinance and what that governs that. So we really do have a good understanding if such a designation would put us at odds with doing something that really needs to be done to the structure, to the building, so.
Yeah. And I think, I think that's kind of where we left it, is that we wanted to bring this report to you as the entire board, see if, and if you had questions, and then maybe set it up for a, where they could come back and present to the whole board, talking about that ordinance and answering any questions you may have. Initially, I'll just say that there was the benefit and one of the, maybe one of the negatives is, is it does put some encumbrances on your building and what you can and cannot do. And I know that as a school district, that can be something that can frustrate us over time. I think, I guess, you know, my takeaway would be, is that no matter what is done, I think we all understand that Peoria High is a beautiful building, a historic building, and it is particularly great now, that has all the renovations done to it. And, you know, for me, I just love the fact that the windows are restored to look like they did long ago. I mean, I think that's really a nice touch. But nevertheless, I think that's what we want to do, is we want to just have another present, have them come back for another presentation, and certainly for the public that has read about this, read a little bit about this in the paper and things, invite you to come to the podium, give your two cents. Some of you may live in historical neighborhoods, you understand what the significance of such a designation might mean. We welcome your comments, and no action's going to be taken on this. We're just, at this point, in the information stage. Yeah.
I think it's also important to understand, this is not something the board sought out.
No.
This was brought to the board, it was interested people in the community that brought this to the board and offered their services if we were interested. And at this point, we're in the finding mode of, you know, what does such designation place, either from a constraint standpoint or a benefit standpoint, or maybe it's neither, but at this point, we're still very, very early stages of trying to understand and find out what the implications of that are.
And we thanked them at the meeting, but to publicly thank them, thank Mr. Berry and Mrs. Cousins, I mean, really a great presentation, and we appreciate the information.
Thank you. Any other committee reports?
Mrs. Wolfman? Just want to give a reminder that the Parent and Teacher Advisory Council will not be meeting in January and February. We're asking that individuals who normally come to that meeting to be attending the strategic plan committees in that regards, and giving your information or your thoughts. So, Mr. McGowan, you got that right? All right.
Mr. Cloyd?
Yes, the Policy Committee met last Wednesday, and we had a number of issues to deal with. We're going to meet again next Wednesday. We have a list, I believe, of at least five different policy issues we're working on. And as a result of request, and I think it makes a lot of sense, our policy meeting announcement will include a list of the policy numbers and topics that we're going to be dealing with. Others may come up, but this makes it much more clear to those who have interest in it, that we are specifically dealing with certain issues, so. We're making some progress, and I think it's, that's constructive work.
Okay. Anything else?
Just have a question for the Policy Committee. The process usually is that, you know, we can develop our own policies here, however, there are policies that are mandated by the state and kind of handed down to us, and we can revise those as we see fit to some degree. How are we receiving those? How many, how many new policies have come down? I don't need a number, but just think about it. How many new policies have come down from the state that we are looking at making conducive to what we are doing here?
Well, I may defer to Mr. Ripper here, but let me give my answer, and that is, there are certain things that were changed by statute during the last legislative session, and we've dealt with at least two of those. There are also things that statute, that the statutes require us to review and update the policy every two years. For example, the bullying policy. So there are certain things that come as a matter of new legislation, there are things that come as a matter of required review over time based on prior legislation, and then things that we see that are either missing in our policy area or things that need to be revised based on new information, new knowledge, or new practice, and in some cases, an administrative procedure that clarifies or updates what's being done. So, I don't know, do you have a more definitive answer to that in terms of the qualities?
No, it's very difficult to tell by number, but the Illinois Association of School Boards has a service for school districts where they actually maintain a staff who prepares policies, and they're very up to date on the policies, and so that's a great resource for us.
Yeah, I know, they've always been the resource that brought those to us.
But they, they maintain a staff who prepares those, and they're also very good about responding to questions, too, so.
Okay. So the process is that the new policy or statute that comes down comes to you first, or it used to come to the secretary?
No, there's a number of people in the district who get the press newsletter, so.
Okay. And then you proceed to update those and?
Then it comes to the board for review, and then final action later on.
Through the Policy Committee, okay. I mean, I just wanted to have the process changed, that's kind of all it was. Some of the policies that we receive from the state don't necessarily work the way they send them to us, so we have to revise those. And I guess I haven't, I haven't seen any massive number of changes coming through. You know, we get this big book of all policies, but, you know, every once in a while, we'll get a new page to go in the book, perhaps we should look at the book. We usually do that about every two years.
We did that, we did that two years ago. We went through the entire book and looked at it.
Here's what's going on. One of them is that we're going to go back and even those policies, and Ms. Wolfman and I did it over the last two years, we're going to note on each of the policies when it was reviewed, even if it wasn't changed, so that we know that it had been reviewed. And we went through the entire book, which took about 18 to 24 months. Number one. Number two is, there needs to be an update to the policy index. And number three is, in terms of how it's presented online, we've been working with the Jacobin in terms of how to present the policy documents, either as a section of the policy book or individual policies, which makes it easier to get access to them. And we've already had one example of that, so the next time we meet, we'll be seeing more of that, I believe, if that's the case. And I think it's very helpful to be able to do that, so that you don't have to download the entire section of policies if you're looking at one. And that will, I think, help us be more flexible in terms of how we look at this, and it probably should make it easier to update over time. I would hope that would be the case. It should not be burdensome.
And it's important that we do that, and maybe even do some education on it. That's great. I mean, I know we do sporadically topics in Parent University, topics in that, but the average person probably, you know, there's a policy that is done by the board or administration, and then there's an administrative procedure to carry that policy out. Not to, you know, not everybody knows that, so maybe more education in that area.
All of those policies are available on the website, and they're downloadable by section of the policy book right now, and eventually, they can be downloadable either by section or by individual policy number.
Now, the policy is available, is the administration, administrative procedure to that policy also available along with that policy?
Yes, it's a separate document, but yes, it is.
Yeah, I'm just saying that.
See, it has the same number as the policy, but it says AP after the, after.
See, that's, I'm saying that's an education opportunity.
Yes.
That's all.
Anything else?
I was just going to add one more thing to that, is that I've been working with school board policies for well over 20 years now, and the process is the same as it's always been, but the complexity of the policies is vastly greater than it used to be. I mean, one cardinal principle of policies is that they're supposed to be relatively simple in terms of what the policy is. But nowadays, everybody, you know, the legislature mandates policies, and they mandate specifically what they're going to say, and sometimes they give you the language, sometimes they don't, and so it's a more involved process than it used to be.
Okay. Just in my 13 years, it is.
Anything else? Do you have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Thank you. Thank you very much.